Okay, we're on air. We're gonna go ahead and call to order the March 26th meeting of the Oakdale City Council. Sarah, will you take the role?
Councilmember Herr.
Here.
Councilmember Ingebretson.
Here.
Councilmember Morcom.
Here.
Councilmember Willenbring.
Here.
Mayor Zabel.
Here. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Councilmembers, we have an amended version in front of us, adding a couple items. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Next up, we have approval of the minutes. Two sets in front of us tonight. First up, workshop meeting minutes from March 12th, 2024. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? I'll look for motion.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are approved. Next up, we have regular meeting minutes from March 12th, 2024. Councilmembers, any changes or corrections? I'll look for motion.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the regular meeting minutes are approved as well. Next up on the agenda is public hearings. We don't have any scheduled tonight, so we'll keep moving into open forum. Before we open the floor for open forum, I do have two proclamations that the city will be issuing that I'd like to read. First up is a proclamation recognizing Autism Acceptance Month. Whereas on March 4th, 2021, the Autism Society of America officially announced the shift in terminology from Autism Awareness Month to Autism Acceptance Month. And whereas April aims to celebrate and promote acceptance for the condition that occurs in one in every 54 children as of 2020 in the United States. And whereas autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the world. And whereas autism is a complex developmental condition affecting the patient's ability to interact, communicate, and progress, and has not one but many different subtypes. And whereas first held in the year 1972 by the Autism Society, Autism Acceptance Month emphasizes the need for public awareness to promote acceptance, celebrate the differences, and be more inclusive towards autistic individuals all around us. And whereas with the autism diagnosis rate increasing fast, we take these 30 days in April to celebrate the differences of, learn more about, and empower autistic individuals. Therefore, I, Kevin Zabel, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2024, as Autism Acceptance Month. We also have a proclamation recognizing Parkinson's Awareness Month. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease, and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States. And whereas Parkinson's disease is estimated to affect approximately 1 million people in the United States, and the prevalence will rise to 1.2 million by the year 2030. And whereas Parkinson's disease is the 14th leading cause of death in the United States according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And whereas it is estimated that the economic burden of Parkinson's disease is at least $52 billion annually, including direct and indirect costs, including treatment, social security payments, and lost income to patients and family members. And whereas research suggests the cause of Parkinson's disease is a combination of genetic and environmental factors, but the exact cause and progression of the disease is still unknown. And whereas there is no objective test or biomarker for Parkinson's disease, and there is no cure or drug to slow or halt the progression of the disease. Whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's disease vary from person to person, and can include tremors, slowness of movement and rigidity, difficulty with balance, swallowing, chewing, and speaking, cognitive impairment and dementia, mood disorders, and a variety of other non-motor symptoms. And whereas volunteers, researchers, caregivers, and medical professionals are working to improve the quality of life of persons living with Parkinson's disease and their families. And whereas increased research, education, and community support services such as those provided by the American Parkinson's Disease Association, the Parkinson's Foundation, M Health Fairview, and other organizations are needed to find more effective treatments and to provide access and quality of care to those living with the disease today. Therefore, I, Kevin Zabel, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2024, as Parkinson's Awareness Month. We're still in open forum. This is an opportunity for anybody joining us in the audience today to step up to the microphone, share anything that is on your mind. The open forum rules for Oakdale. Ask you to keep comments three minutes or so, and please begin by stating your name and address for the record. So anybody that would like to share anything, please feel free to step up.
My name is Brian Aragoni. I live at 3014 Hemingway Avenue North, Oakdale, Minnesota, 55128. First and foremost, just want to commend Public Works Department on an excellent job keeping those roads safe and clear for all of us to attend tonight, and appreciate all of you guys' service and dedication to the city of Oakdale, certainly appreciated by both myself, my family, and as a member of East Metro as well. I'm the president or co-president of East Metro and the current president of Tartan Area Youth Hockey Association, here to discuss some charitable gambling discussions that are on the agenda today, and some concerns that we may have. I think it's well-known that the borough has made a decision to go with White Bear Lake Youth Hockey, which feels a little bit in our backyard, certainly a competitor. And our goal within East Metro and Tartan area is to continue to provide services for youth sports with the families that live within our city limits of Oakdale. And that feels a little bit like an infringement for our resources. Charitable gambling is a huge aspect to how we provide our services, whether it's ice time, whether it's talent development, and for our families, whether keeping them here or just keeping them in our area ultimately is one of our goals. And through charitable gambling, that's our biggest resource of income ultimately. And so I did a little bit of research when I first heard the wind. I'm a big proponent of businesses' ability to choose on who they want to go with and have the right to make those decisions, but ultimately feel that there's better options within our city limits that could keep those resources within the city of Oakdale. And I'll try and save it in my backyard with what I know best with East Metro. However, I looked in and talked to the arena manager who's a school district 622 about how much ice time White Bear had truly purchased from Tartan. And East Metro, I know we were 35% of their total revenue, over 432 hours purchased. And White Bear Lake had only accounted for less than half of a percent of Tartan's overall hours purchased. It came out to five hours over the last year, which further kind of led me down the rabbit hole of just the confusion over why this decision would be made from the borough. We have families that live within these limits, utilize their restaurant and services multiple times a week while we're at Tartan, and ultimately just am concerned over the direction. I think there's better alternatives, while East Metro may not be one of them for the borough. Certainly OAA, Hillmary Fathers Club, I know Merrick does a lot of charitable gambling as well. So I just would like to see these resources stay within the city limits within our family. I know it's been acknowledged that nine of our players participated over at White Bear Lake. That is true, but we're...
Could you wrap up your comments?
Yep.
You are at the end of your time.
Yep, ultimately. We just, while we had to send nine players over there, we want to keep it less than that. We don't want to see nine turn into 15 or 20. So I would ask for you to vote what you feel is best within the city of Oakdale. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make comments under open forum tonight?
Laura Kirkoff, 6768 Upper 35th Street North, Oakdale, 55128. And I'm gonna follow up with Brian in regards to EMS and what we do and what we use that money for. He kind of did touch base. We do have 273 players within the community that play hockey for us. Some of the money is used for our recruit and retention committee, which provides skate for free. We do support some of the city of Oakdale events. Also, Friday night rink skates that the district puts on. We do support that. Due to also, our families, all of them do not have the income to pay the full $1,900, the $2,200 that it costs to play. So let alone extra training, they cannot go out and afford that. The charitable gambling, we hired a skating coach, a goalie coach, this past season for two different pre-skate, and then also during the season. We're looking at doing it for the summer, so that again additionally that gambling pays for that, to allow families to not have to pay out of their pocket. We also have a scholarship fund that last year we had between 10 and 15 individuals that required that, let alone at the end of the season. We believe everyone should have the right to play hockey. We will not turn a family away. We will work with them as much as we can. That results in a loss, because at the end of the year, we still have families that may pay $350 for two months, and then life happens, and we cover the rest of that, which is a huge loss to the association. So gambling, charitable gambling definitely helps out us, cover our costs, and help out families so kids can keep playing hockey. And then recently, Tartan is going to be going through a remodel in the upcoming years, I want to say, and we are working with them to help fund a dry land for not only the association, but also our high school, so that, hoping to retain people, it'll also be like an area that can be rented out and provide income for the district at the same time. So I appreciate the time, and as Brian said, it just would feel better that if we can keep that charitable gambling within our community, would help out our community the most. And that's it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make comments under open forum tonight? Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with the consensus motions. Councilmembers in front of us, we have A through I tonight. Are there any that councilmembers would like to pull for individual consideration? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve consensus motions A through I as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And consensus motions are approved. Next up is an opportunity to check in with our advisory boards and commissions. First up, the first commission that met in March was the Environmental Management Commission. I am the liaison for that group. They had a presentation from, I guess it's technically Washington and Ramsey County, the environmental organization that oversees and administers the food scraps program. So Oakdale will be invited or enrolled into the dual county program starting April 1st, which means our residents can request bags for their food scraps for free from that organization. Very cool project that'll be rolling out. Also, a lot, the food scraps that they will accept are a lot broader than we would typically think in terms of like backyard composting. You know, anybody that does backyard composting knows you can't do like bones and all that. This group can take them because of the industrial nature of how they process all of that compost. So we will be able to keep a lot of food waste out of our trash system, which is pretty cool. I think the stat they gave was about 30% of all trash is food waste, which is a huge amount. So if we can turn that back into compost, that's a pretty cool thing for our community. We're in technically Phase 2. Phase 1 rolled out with a few cities to see how it went, but Oakdale will be starting April 1st. That was the bulk of it. The other commission that met was Tree Board. Would you like me to take that one?
Yeah.
I popped by and said hi.
You want to begin?
Yes, absolutely. They were working on finalizing their events for 2024, so obviously the Arbor Day Tree Giveaway, which I will be covering in a little bit, is a big event for them. They will have a spring planting event in May, as well as the buckthorn removal event, weather permitting, in the fall. They were also working on just some kind of public awareness items for some of our existing programs, like the Tree Trek Program, having conversations about how we can, you know, do a better job at presenting that to the community. So there's a lot on their work plan for this year as well. So our boards and commissions are very busy. Let me see. Next up, a word of bids. Nothing. Staff reports. We'll move into community development. We have two conditional use permits. Our city planner, Luke, is here to walk us through both of them. Welcome, Luke.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the first CUP conditional use permit is located at 4030 Granada Avenue. The CUP request is to allow a second garage on the property. The proposed garage is to be 1,000 square feet. The property is zone R2. It's just under two acres, and there is an existing detached garage at the property. A second garage may be allowed through the conditional use permit review process, and after reviewing the request, staff finds that the request meets the zoning review criteria as detailed in the staff report on file. The planning commission reviewed the request back on March 7th, and they recommended approval of it. So staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the following conditions, and this is Resolution 2024-31 in your packet. First condition of approval is that the garage shall meet setback in height requirements. Number two, the garage shall not exceed 1,000 square feet in size. And number three, a building permit must be obtained for the use. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions for Luke?
Just one quick question, just to give him welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to confirm, this is not for commercial purposes or a business? This is just for the benefit of the resident?
That's correct, councilmember.
That's my only question. Thank you.
Great. Councilmembers, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2024-31, approving a conditional use permit for a second garage at 4030 Granada Avenue North, with conditions included in the attached resolution.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that CUP is approved. Luke, do you want to walk us through the second one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the second conditional use permit is located at 4423 Helena Way North, and this request is for a home occupation. It's a residential hair salon. So the operations would involve just one employee who is one of the property owners there. It's a single-station hair salon. Hours of operation are proposed to be 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and then again, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and this is every day, so Sunday through Saturday. So staff has reviewed this request and finds that it meets the zoning review criteria for a CUP, as detailed in the staff report on file. The planning commission also reviewed this request at their March 7th meeting, and they recommended approval. And staff recommends approval of this request. And I will go through the conditions in the Resolution 2024-30. There's six conditions here. Number one, hours of operation for the business shall be from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Sunday through Saturday. Number two, parking for the use shall be conducted in a manner that does not obstruct the right of way. Number three, no more than one outside worker shall be employed for the use. Number four, all signage for the use shall comply with ordinance requirements. Number five, the applicant shall maintain a valid license from the State Board of Cosmetology. And finally, number six, the applicant shall meet all regulations set by the State Board of Cosmetology for residential salons. And I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Luke. Councilmembers, any questions for Luke? All right, I'll look for a motion.
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2024-30, approving a conditional use permit for a home occupation hair salon at 4423 Helena Way North, with conditions included in the attached resolution.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that CUP is approved as well. Thank you, Luke. Next up is our opportunity to check in with our city attorney, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm just specific to report. Happy to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions for Jim? All right, let's turn to our right and check in with our city administrator, Ms. Volkers.
Hi, Mayor, Council. Okay, so there's two things under administrative report on the agenda. The first is the naming of the new park in the Willowbrook neighborhood. So I want to do a little bit of background to get it so the public understands, and then talk about what we did and what the proposed name is, and then you can take action if you want to. Willowbrook is a new 208-acre residential neighborhood located in Oakdale north of 34th between 694 and Ideal. It is expected to bring more than 1,400 homes to the city of Oakdale. This unique neighborhood will feature several city parks along with new trails. The first of these parks is at 3820 Henna Avenue and is set to break ground in 2024. The park is intended to be a space of community gathering and neighborhood events. Amenities will include a playground, teen challenge course, fitness equipment, nature overlooks, walking path, picnic shelter, Mr. Sprayers, a flexible performance gathering shelter, and restroom facilities. Council did direct staff to hold a community park naming contest for that newest park. We did that. We went out to the public. We received many submissions from the public. It was discussed at a couple workshop meetings, and in the end, there were several submissions by the public to include the name Willowbrook or Commons. So because of those multiple submissions for those names, the council decided to name it Willowbrook Commons. So that is what's before you tonight, is to approve the naming of the new park in the Willowbrook neighborhood as Willowbrook Commons.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions for Chris? I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the naming of the new park in the Willowbrook neighborhood as Willowbrook Commons.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any comments? I'll just make one. I want to say a big thank you to all of the residents that submitted ideas in this contest. We haven't named a park in this city in a long time, and so this was a cool opportunity to get residents involved. I personally was blown away at some of the creative suggestions we got, which was pretty cool, and I think serves as a foundation for naming future parks. You know, it's always good to have a list of ideas on hand. So thank you to everybody who took time to not only come up with names, but provide some background as to why those names are being suggested. We really do appreciate it. So we have a motion. We have a second. Final comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that park is named. One more item. Chris?
I'd like to introduce this topic. I expect there will be some conversation. Could be. We did have a couple people already mentioned. This is about the onsite gambling license that has been requested by White Bear Lake Area Hockey Association. Our current city code of process and procedure is that an applicant can apply for a gambling license. The business that they're applying to do the gambling at needs to support or not, in general. If they are applying for use for a gambling license at the borough, the borough management supports this request. That is what's before you tonight. So you'll notice on the agenda there is some background within the packet about how we got here, the application process, and why they're requesting it, and why the borough supports it. You'll notice there's not a staff recommendation on this one, so we did not propose anything. If you do agree and support this application, there is a draft resolution in the packet. If you do not, if you decide as a group that you do not want to support this application, I would suggest that you state your intent, and that we bring back a resolution with your intent acknowledged and written down for a resolution at the next meeting, for the official vote at the next meeting. That's what I'd recommend. So I leave it to you to have that discussion.
Councilmembers, any questions for Chris?
So if, I mean, I'm gonna vote no on this. So if, could I make a motion to deny?
I'm gonna suggest, in terms of process, let's get the resolution as written in the packet on the floor. So we need a motion, a second, for, it was listed as approving. We can have conversation. If that vote fails, then we'll take that step. If it's approved, then we'll take that step.
That's what I was wondering. That's what I was going, Mayor.
Yep. But at least then, getting the resolution on the floor, then we can open conversation.
Okay.
So, and nobody, you know, if you make the motion a second, that does not mean you have to vote in the end. It just gets it on the floor. So are there any technical questions in terms of the application for Chris?
I did have one.
That's my welcome.
Just want to make sure. I know certain licenses and permits, when you apply, if it in the future is not approved, it can hinder their application for future licenses? So for charitable gambling, if this were to be denied at a future meeting or this meeting, would that prevent them from choosing another organization to engage in charitable gambling with?
No, as far as we're concerned?
Yes.
No, that absolutely would not inhibit that at all.
Just wanted to confirm.
No.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Chris? Technical questions. Jim?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just to supplement the city administrator's response to that question, the actual application for you tonight is what's called a premises permit. It's technically issued by the state, but they won't issue it unless the council agrees with it. So the applicant is actually the hockey association. So if that were to be denied, it certainly wouldn't prevent them from applying somewhere else or someone else applying at this actual location for a premises permit. So I'd help with that.
They have to go hand in hand, the applicant and the premise.
Right. The owner of the property is not the applicant. It's the hockey association.
Okay. Were there any technical questions for Chris, or should we get the motion on the floor?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Chris, I would like to ask, so the vetting process to get us to this point, did the applicant, the hockey association, did they meet all of our requirements for being eligible to be approved?
Yes. It did, per the city code. That outlines exactly that there has to be. You'll see on the first page here, it talks about the, you know, what the regulations are, and also between the state regulations and the city code, and they did meet the requirements, the minimum requirements to make the application. Yes, if that's your question.
Yeah. How about, did you, to what lengths did we go at validating those claims that the association made, or?
Such as, do you have one in particular?
Like, you know, their impact on Oakdale residents. You know, they had noted that they support nine Oakdale residents. Do we feel like that was sufficient enough to?
So that would be up to you.
Okay.
We outline, so in their application materials, we confirm that they were being truthful, if that's what you're asking. However, it is up to you, to the extent that they provide financial contributions towards the city, that's up to you to discuss and decide if you want to issue the permit as a result of that. But technically, they met the intent of the city code, but the council has discretion in this area. Jim, would you like to add anything?
Yes, maybe I can supplement that just a bit. So one of the conditions for getting a license, excuse me, a premises permit, is that the applicant must be a charitable organization that can demonstrate reasonable benefit through service or financial contribution to organizations in the city of Oakdale Trade Area. City of Oakdale Trade Area is not just the city. It's all contiguous cities too. And the city council shall determine on a case-by-case basis if an organization has demonstrated that sufficient contribution has been provided. So there's some discretion involved in that determination, and I don't think that's a finding that the staff made. They just presenting the application to you because they filled out all the, they met the minimum requirements to submit the application, so staff has to process it. So keep in mind that the trade area, though, does include, by state law, the trade area is not just the city of Oakdale. It's the city of Oakdale and every contiguous city to the city. So the question, that's the one thing there was some discretion on, but it's not just contributions to Oakdale, it's contributions to the whole trade area.
So, city attorney Thompson. So the word that sticks out there is reasonable. What's the word immediately following that? Contributions or benefit or?
Right, that's correct.
That, well, what is the word?
The word, I'm sorry. The reason is they must demonstrate reasonable benefit through service or financial contributions to organizations in the city of Oakdale Trade Area.
Okay, so that would be reasonable benefits to organizations in Oakdale, Maplewood, North St. Paul, White Bear Lake.
Correct.
Montomede, Lake Elmo, all the way around.
Right.
We are bordered by a lot of cities.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's take the motion, and then we can continue debate. Can I get a motion as presented in the agenda? Somebody. I mean, you still get to vote how you want to vote, but then we can at least open up debate to individual councilmembers.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2024-28, approving a premises permit for White Bear Lake Area Hockey Association to conduct lawful gambling at Oakdale Borough, 7053 10th Street North.
There's a motion. Is there a second? I'll make the second. Conversation. Who wants to go first?
Well, I just, I mean, I basically share Mr. Aragoni's sentiment in that I'm befuddled we're here tonight debating this. So that's all I have to say.
I would agree as well. I am less concerned about which charitable organization benefits. I do want Oakdale to benefit. That's the purpose of the charitable gambling clause, and I think they made a good case.
With respect to that comment, Councilmember Morcom, I think the challenge is, state law says we have to consider the trade area, not just Oakdale. We can't be restrictive to Oakdale only. That's my concern with denial, is that I don't think any of us can deny reasonable benefit to the trade area. Whether that is in Oakdale or not, that's a very different standard, but that's not the legal standard we have in our code, and the state requires us to apply, which I think muddies the waters a lot. muddies the waters a lot.
Well, maybe.
My, well, if I could just finish. My question for Jim would be, what is the due process if the applicant disagrees with our decision in determining, hypothetically, if we deny, what are their options for evaluating reasonable benefit in the trade area?
Mayor, Members of Council, well, the process for challenging it would be to go to court. Okay, that's the process. And, you know, this is like the city administrator pointed out, this is a discretionary action. Reasonable minds can differ on this, and you are right that the trade area is defined by state law, but it still needs a finding by the council that the organization is providing a reasonable benefit to organizations in the trade area. So that's a discretionary decision for the council to decide on, but it can be challenged in court.
And Mayor, if I may, add a couple comments.
I think Councilmember Morecambe had a point first.
Yeah, no, and it was just to follow up. Maybe this is a question for our attorney as well, but, you know, there are so many options for charitable organizations in the City of Oakdale that could benefit, and I think in my personal opinion would benefit much more than this organization that's coming forward. So if it's the discretion and the, you know, intent of the council, are we able to hold a decision in waiting for the opportunity for something that's a better benefit for the City of Oakdale? Just instead of denying or approving, we just abstain?
Mayor, Members of Council, now I think you're gonna have to act on it one way or the other because it's pending, and there's not a 60-day statute here like there is for land use, but there is a reasonable time period, you know, in which you should act on the application since it is before you. I mean, tabling it would be the effective denial, and if you're gonna deny it, as the city administrator mentioned, our recommendation is to have staff come back with a resolution and deny the next meeting with the appropriate findings that we can make that you can consider at that time.
We're still on Councilmember comment. Anybody else want to weigh in? Jake, was there something?
Yeah, you know, just, just to, you know, kind of piggyback off Councilmember Morecambe's comments, you know, I don't think any reasonable person would question why, and only speaking for myself here, why I am opposed to it. I mean, there's literally zero benefit to any Oakdale resident if White Bear Lake's Hockey Association sells pull tabs at the borough, with the exception maybe of somebody who might work at the borough that lives in Oakdale. You know, and I don't disagree with your concerns regarding the law, but this is one of those things. I think there's great, plenty of gray area there, and I just, you know, and again, I'm just, I'm just very surprised we're in this situation and we're here, so.
Mayor, is that what? Thank you. And I think with how the law is written and everything, it gives us the discretion, and I feel like it doesn't meet the reasonable financial support of our trade area, so I would not be supportive of this, of approving this, this resolution here.
Any final comments? All right, there was a motion, there was a second. All those in favor say aye. All those oppose?
Nay.
Nay. That action is taken. I'm gonna follow up with that and make a motion directing staff to prepare a resolution supporting the denial for presentation at our next city council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and staff has that direction. Sorry, I didn't put a council meeting date on there, but you got it. Council presentations. Anybody want to go first? Anybody have anything? How about down here? Okay, I got a few. First up, for our annual Peak Grassy Arbor Day Tree Giveaway, the city will hand out 200 trees free to Oakdale residents on Saturday, April 27th at Walton Park. Registration, advanced registration is required for this drive-through event, and online registration opens this Monday, April 1st at 8:00 a.m. For more information, including the tree types that are available, please visit the city's website, oakdalemn.gov. A reminder, winter parking rules prohibiting on-street parking from midnight to 5:00 a.m. Technically ends this Monday, April 1st, but we want to add a giant caveat that the, that the parking restrictions remain in effect anytime we get two or more inches of snowfall. Hopefully, we're done with that for the season, but this is Minnesota. So if there is no snow in the forecast around the streets, you are welcome to park overnight on the street, but if there is snow, you will need to move or risk a ticket or tow. Our city parks are an important part of our community. We want to hear from you. Take our quick online survey about parks that you use and what you'd like to see in our city parks. That survey is available on our city website, oakdalemn.gov, and the survey will be open through Friday, April 5th. Another announcement, another big event coming up. Our indoor garage sale will be held at the Discovery Center on Saturday, April 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's a great opportunity for bargain hunters, collectors and families to attend and browse some unique finds, so we hope you can join us at the Discovery Center on April 6th. Finally, in collaboration with the Oakdale Area Chamber Commerce and the St. Paul Area Chamber, city staff, city staff and elected officials recently visited with Canvas Health and Marcus Cinema as part of our business retention, expansion and attraction program, also known as the BRIA program. The goal of this program is to build strong relationships between city officials and our local businesses. Finally, I have one additional presentation. At our last city council meeting, the city council went into closed executive session for the purposes of conducting a performance evaluation of the city administrator. To finish up that process, the city council has to read into the record a brief summary of that meeting. I don't believe, Jim, this requires any action, correct? It's just the reading of the summary. So, in summary, the city council met in closed session on March 12th, 2024, to conduct the performance evaluation of city administrator Chris Volkers. Chris continues to be an effective communicator with the city council, the public and key stakeholders. She excels as a communicator and is a dependable source of information. She has done a nice job empowering her staff to take a leading invisible role in front of the city council. She has a strong work ethic and has put in place a staff leadership team that can lead the city into the future. Chris has also done an excellent job presiding over our finances and making strong recommendations to the city council that led to an increase in our bond rating. I'm sorry. Chris has worked diligently to ensure that every staff member is representing this community in the most honorable respect and that every interaction with the public, partners and other elected bodies reflects positively on our community. Chris was encouraged to be diligent in following up on requests made by city council members during workshops and other meetings. In summary, despite an overwhelming workload, Chris has met and in most cases exceeded the city council's goals for her. Let's go ahead and move on to claims. We have a claims roster in front of us from March 13th through March 26th in the amount of 1.2 million and change. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve claims for the period March 13th, 2024, to March 26th, 2024, in the amount of $1,234,409.86.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the bills are paid. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we are adjourned. Thank you and good night.